Letter and I didn't see a whole lot of students working for this award during the school year, but at the end of the school year, kids were kind of abuzz with it and just looking at my daughter's friends, who got it and who didn't. I didn't really see one being that much more excellent than the other. So I wasn't really sure that, you know, the top echelon was getting the award or maybe they were, but that there was someone right there next to it. And I was open to hearing what administration was willing to propose in terms of recognizing excellence or citizenship or all the other wonderful qualities that maybe don't come with a grade throughout the school year. But there was an, but I was concerned, given the timing when it came to the board, it was later in the spring and I was concerned about a surprise that all of a sudden it wasn't happening. I think it really needs to come from the building level. This is a conversation that principals should have with their parent community and say, this is what we're thinking, doing it early as near as possible, get parent feedback and really come up with a, you know, recognition throughout the year and at graduation. I think for those students that really, really have gone above and beyond to have the recognition at a graduation ceremony, I agree with you, I think that's a, that's a proper venue for it, but ultimately not our decision and.
So can I make some comments now? Am I allowed to comment back?
Uh.
Just quickly, alright, cause two things. One is you just said, it's really not in our purview, you don't think it's in your purview, but listen to you, it sounds like if you think it's in your purview because basically what you all just said is you did send notes back to the administrators and they took it as though you are getting involved. So I think if you asked administrators and staff what they think, they would say differently, just from a perception of.
Mr. Peterson.
Just to be very clear, in my response, I didn't reply to anybody but the superintendent. I, I had no direct communication with the administration.
It did get down through there, it just got to.
But, you know, part of, part of our role is, the way I see it, is, is not just the oversight of the, of the, you know, of the administration of the operation of the schools, but again, to focus some effort as being a conduit for parent concerns. You know, the, the public sees us as a route to comment on things that are happening, things that are areas of concern. And if we in some areas anticipate that concern, I think that that's a valid, a valid use of our, of our position to do that. And, and again, I, I, you know, to piggyback on something that Mrs. Gerber said, I, I couched it entirely as this is my opinion of how this might play out. And I didn't think that that was any kind of pressure at all, I thought that that was.
I'm just telling you how it was, how it was interpreted and how it ultimately came down. That's where, that's how it came down because.
Well, that's, and I, and I understand that if the, if the administrators feel, feel they were pressured in some way, I certainly didn't do it directly and I.
I understand.
And I, I don't feel bad that I did it in the first place. I feel like it was, it's entirely within our purview to act as, you know, to, to comment as, you know, spokespeople for the, for the parent community.
And I hope that you understand it's within our purview as well as teachers to voice how we, how we feel as well about.
It's absolutely. And, you know, and I, I've been in any number of meetings with, with teachers and administrators where we've had a vigorous back and forth on issues that we felt very strongly about that in the end came to a constructive conclusion. And I think that that can be the case here as well, but I certainly, I, I'm not going to apologize for expressing an opinion to the superintendent and not to.
And I'm not asking you to, I'm asking you to just understand how, how it was perceived. That's all I'm asking you as well.
That's, that's fair.
And, and the only other thing I would say is you have a venue to do it already. You have graduation. If you want to add more to graduation, it could be done at graduation with additional awards. So you take away that night because that day is so bad in school, it's so, you know, to have those kids walking around, you're going, you're not going, that's really a, an uncomfortable situation in the school. That's all I'm gonna say.
Mrs. Vitale.
We hear you and I just want you to know that as it didn't, the conversation was between board members and the superintendent and it's our role just to tell the superintendent, you know, this is how we think it's going to play out in the community at this particular point in time. And we had no direct communication with the principals. What the past superintendent, how she communicated to her staff that we were not a part of that, just, just so you know, and maybe, you know, given the timing and the public pushback, it, it just wasn't the right time for a change, so.
And I just wanted you to be aware as well, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Suzanne, Musco 123, Ry Gate Road. I'm gonna change the course and go to facilities, I figure we've got three different topics, somebody will do finance. Facilities, um, where do I start? Roger Ludlow High School, I mean, not Roger Ludlow High School, that's my old high school, Fairfield Ludlow High School. To see and to read about the situation at Ludlow High School was alarming, disappointing, annoying. And then to hear at the last Board of Ed meeting that I caught, the superintendent discussing the budget and the need to potentially be looking at maintenance issues, I put two and two together and here I am. Last year, the Board of Finance, the discussion of maintenance on the facilities was a huge discussion. The first time I think I've ever heard the Board of Finance looking at the Board of Ed like, hey, if you need money for maintenance, everybody be hollering. And Mr. Cullen sat there and said, nope, we're all doing good, everything's great. And then you get the report out of Ludlow where we have steam pipes and mold and tiles with water damage and rodent feces and, okay. First off, we have tools for schools, so I thought we weren't supposed to have one wet board anywhere in any of our facilities after the McKinley fiasco. So what's going on? Do we have tools for schools or we don't do that anymore? Do we have principals who are not seeing what's going on in their building? Is there a situation where the custodians don't feel that they are getting the resources to get the stuff fixed? I mean, to hear that we've got teachers walking around with medical masks on at Ludlow, we just put how many millions of dollars into that school in windows, in an addition, and we, nobody noticed that, you know, Ratatouille was hanging out in the steam room? I mean, that we have bottles of sawdust, you know, collecting water? I mean, I don't know. So we seem to have a breakdown here. And I'm concerned because if we have a breakdown at this level at Ludlow, what do we got somewhere else? I mean, I appreciate we have old schools. I appreciate they need tender loving care. I appreciate that you're all going to be looking at a facilities plan and creating one so we can take us forward. But on the other side, like, these are basic maintenance items. And where I'm concerned is we've watched on the town level how people were allowed to do jobs and not answer for the accountability. And here we have a high school which to me should have had all the processes in place to catch this and it didn't. Additionally, I thought that the letter that came out was very nice to tell everyone there's a situation and teachers have brought this forth, but there was no explanation of why Woodward and Curran were being brought in other than to say classrooms were being closed. Why weren't parents noticed as to what the issue was that the administration was now going to ask Woodward and Curran to look at? Let parents know what's going on. And that really wasn't done. It was done after Woodward and Curran issued the report and the superintendent set his, his report and Mr. Papa George's report and the 45-page Woodward and Curran report. But the original letter that went home to parents is like, teachers are having an issue, we've contacted Woodward and Curran and this is going to be looked at. And then, I don't know, I know I went and I looked on Facebook and all heck was breaking loose all over town because parents are now concerned as to what the heck is going on that we're moving all these children out of all of these classrooms. So what are we thinking here?
Response from the board? Mrs. Canely.
Um, I think what we're thinking is that an issue was brought to the attention of administration, administration came to central office, it was investigated, it was turned out that the initial complaint that there was merit to it, and now it is being addressed. I cannot answer, and I, I think you guessed that, I obviously cannot answer how none of those things were known. I know that the steam pipe genuinely was a surprise, however, it was situated, it was not visible. And so, great that the concern surfaced in investigation, which I, I don't think that's what they were even expecting to find, so that was almost an added, not bonus, but that wasn't even expected. But the other things you reference, I can't speak to, and obviously Tools for Schools is a PTA position, so I don't think we as a board can speak to that anyway. I don't know if there's a Tools for Schools rep at, as far as I know, it's still active in our schools, I don't know if they have a rep for that or not. But, you know, I think, I believe this board has attempted to send a signal to the superintendent and to Mr. Papa George and the other town bodies have been supportive that if we need to address maintenance, let's do so. And last year's budget was a testament to the fact that we are addressing maintenance. We can't do it all at once, but I, I don't think any of us felt that there was something of, if there was something major of significant importance, then it was in that budget. But obviously I'm expect, we don't know what the budget will be yet, but, you know, that that's going to continue to be. You know, we don't need to have Westport situation, Stanford situation, Greenwich's situation of closing schools. And I think we've been far better than those districts. I certainly can speak to our being far better than what Greenwich has done. Their, their board has been chastised for not being on top of that and we have been much more proactive than that in a measured way as we, you know, allocate a certain amount each time. But I think we've heard the, the message from Board of Finance that they support, you know, well-founded, you know, maintenance projects. And I look forward to seeing what comes out of this next budget.
Mr. Asa, yes?
Thank you for making your comments. I will say that from my experiences thus far in both the board table and in the finance committee, that I do believe that Mr. Papa George is committed to changing some of the past practices and how we approach some of these things. And I do believe he is committed to making sure that we are better identifying problems and making a plan moving forward. There is no money tree, as you know. Like, all town bodies can say, oh yeah, come to us, come to us, but at the end of the day, if we come to us, them for too much, it's going to be a problem. So I do believe that in the next year, we will have a better facilities plan and we will be working in more collaboration with the director of, executive director of operations. And I believe the superintendent will be supportive of it and I think this board will too.
Mrs. Vitale.
There is a Tools for Schools at Ludlow and we did put a renovation in at Ludlow, but we did not fund the HVAC. We did not fund new bathrooms at Ludlow. So we can't be surprised when pipes start leaking or there might be air quality issues at Ludlow. Some of the issues, I think that staff was complaining of symptoms, I think they did a Tools for Schools, they look, you know, don't see anything. They brought in Woodward and Curran to test the air and then start, started pulling apart the school and found issues and are now addressing it. I hear you, you know, I can't, when I, my directive to the superintendent last year was that we need to address some of these maintenance issues. That was a directive that was fully supported by the board and we're going to keep on moving forward. We understand that we need to invest in this because it ends up just costing us more in the end, creating bigger problems and obviously we want to create the healthiest and safest environment for our staff and our children. Thank you.
No, I definitely, I, I hear what you're saying and I'm not, you know, I appreciate that maintenance, when you've got boilers and you've got in-ground tanks and you have HVAC, but when you look at this report and you see that an entire wall was full of mold, I mean, that you had ceiling tiles that were wet and had stains on them. I mean, we went through this when my child was in elementary school and we had to, you know, take down McKinley and all of a sudden, the district was very pro, if a teacher sees a wet ceiling tile, that gets taken down and we investigate. And it seems like there was an environment and maybe it was something that's happened over a longer period of time and I'm very thankful that we're going to be looking at the process because somewhere the process broke down here. I mean, and while I appreciate we didn't put in an air quality situation at the high school, the fact that you had a whole segment of the building, you know, being impacted by this and kids having to be moved. And, and yet the report is about things that you should have been able to see on the ceiling. And so my concern is, is like, is it that we have custodians that at that point, I mean, maybe Mr. Papa George is, is the new light that needed to be shining, but it's somebody felt that they couldn't bring these things to the attention. I mean, I thought at the high school level when I raised this question way back when, was that if a teacher had a problem and she saw a wet tile or he saw a wet tile, you contacted the custodian and central office and that thing got resolved. But when you read that report, as a parent, I, I'm feeling for A, the teacher who's in a classroom with mold on her walls or his walls and the students in, in that facility as well. And so I really do think that there needs to be a discussion as to that these processes and this kind of lack of maintenance, basic maintenance, not the big ticket items, needs to be addressed and re-instituted back because this is a situation that leads to the next big issue.
Thank you. And Mrs. Canely.
Yeah, just one quick follow-up. The initial complaints and, please board correct me if I'm wrong about this, none of the initial complaints were about wet tile, sawdust, visible mold. So the, all of the initial complaints were, we aren't feeling well and we believe this environment has created it. So the basic maintenance you're talking about, it, it's not that it's oversimplifying, it's not that it was visible and ignored. It was not discovered until there was the, the more, you know, amorphous, intangible, we're not feeling well and we think it's the air quality doing it. So just to be clear, it was not teachers saying, I have wet tiles, I have mold, there's a pile of unhealthy sawdust sort of thing. These weren't visible. And I, that said, I haven't seen the pictures, I'm not familiar enough with the building to know what did it take to then discover it? You know, what level of digging did it take? But those complaints were not being made and unaddressed. So just, just to be clear that that's not what was happening.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up? You can come back up, yes, as long as we don't have someone that hasn't spoken already. You don't have to sign in again, just state your name, so we.
Chrissy Kelly. And I had heard some kind of talking a little bit before the meeting, but again, I watched the three-hour, God bless you, meeting and I don't know if these questions are exactly for you or the administration, so I apologize if this is not the correct audience. But I did have some questions and concerns about the math academy. Math is actually very near and dear to my heart, I am an admitted math geek. And I had heard about the math academy, none of my kids have, are, I kind of, none of them were in that grade that I would have actually known about it. So I knew it existed, I didn't really know anything about it. And I've already addressed an email to the math department regarding this, but I wanted to, to mention it here. I just had a couple questions about, I, I don't under, I, I just need a little more understanding on how it came to exist in the first place. I feel like, especially on the heels of what we were just talking about, about not being able to fund, you know, some pretty important facilities things, you know, anybody, any conversation involving education involves, you know, budgets being cut, budgets are tight, 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 tight. And here we are spending money to basically set what sounded like to me, a private school setting for 13 children, who aren't just getting the 13 child experience for math solely. They are getting it in language arts, they are getting it in science, they are getting it for every single period. And while I agree or while I firmly understand that they have made sacrifices to do that, they have, they forego transportation, they forego being in their home school, that is a sacrifice that they were fortunate enough to make because they could work the logistics out themselves. But I still have a hard time understanding how we can really justify as a district spending any kind of money to give, right now only 13, I believe the range that they said when I looked up now, because last night I had to look up the genesis of the project. So it seemed like the proposal was for a range of 13 to 25 kids. And for whatever reason, I guess 40 children were flagged and only 13 chose to do the project. And if I eyeball the rest of the class sizes, you know, district-wide, I think the smallest one I could find was 17. So really, I mean, it is a very special opportunity that we're offering these 13 and probably next year, another grade, it sounds like. But I just wonder if that's the best use of time and resources. And I also just want to point out that a question was asked of both Mrs. Farrell and Mr. Rasmussen about, and I think, I want to say it was you maybe who asked about, could it be the success, one of the successes of the program is just inherent in the size of the, the class? And it was dismissed, but I don't think you can dismiss that so quickly. Cause I would argue, going back to any elementary school, what fourth grader wouldn't thrive or benefit in having a 13 to one teacher to student or student to teacher ratio? So I appreciate the opportunity that these children are being given and I don't want to sound like a Grinch to, that it's something that shouldn't be offered, but I really, really wonder and have concerns about it. And as, one last follow-up on that, I do have a sixth grader in Ludlow who is currently in seventh grade math. So she didn't have the benefit of this program and it's just something that, that she did. So again, near and dear to me, I'm, I'm very in touch, I would think, with this topic. And I don't, I don't think you're going to be able to answer this, but I am very sensitive to what if any gender bias there is when it comes to our math department. When she was, she didn't originally test to get in there, so we had to, I kind of had to advocate for her and we retested at the end of the summer. And I was asking about the statistics and I got a little bit of pushback saying, we don't publish those statistics, but we don't have a gender bias. And I would argue, now that she is in that class of 16 boys and six girls, that I don't necessarily agree that there isn't a gender bias. I don't know what the makeup is at Woods or anywhere else, but I would be very curious to know of the 40 children that were flagged, if we know a breakdown of the gender and of the 13 that are currently in the program, what the gender breakdown is.
Okay. We're, we're at five minutes, so I want to give Mr. Asa a moment to respond.
So another board member can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this all started with discussions about the methods to address racial imbalance. And we were talking about magnet programs and other types of programs. And I, I believe, Mrs. Leeper can correct me if I'm wrong, this spurred from that as an idea, from basically the board deciding that the magnet program with, was not a suitable solution or a feasible solution. As for some of the things like gender bias, I can't, I can't touch that. That's something you'd have to talk with the administration about. And then as far as the costs, you know, we were told that there really would be minimal or no additional cost for this because we'd be utilizing an existing FTE in the school. And I think, you know, some of us voiced similar concerns, but we are where we are and we saw what was there and I think that presentation was good for the board to see. And it'll be interesting to see where we go when we start the budget process.
Mrs. Canely.
Um, yeah, I don't have the same recollection regarding that it was a, I think the, the racial imbalance topic has brought up for a number of years now, you know, that swirling issue of, you know, magnet program, magnet school. So I think that may have spurred conversations, but I don't, I think this was just a recognition that we do have students who could be accelerated in math, who cannot take advantage of the summer opportunity for whatever reason, and this gives them an opportunity during the school year to receive that advantage and that double acceleration that students who can put in the time in the summer receive. And truly reach out and, and tap a, a skill and ability that differentiation in the classroom cannot do what that math academy is doing. It just can't. I mean, a, a classroom teacher with 24, 25 students, I can't even imagine the range already in the room, but to have at that top end, the student who really should be a grade and a half ahead, it just, you know, you do need some whole class discussion and then there's the breakout work and it just, there's a whole segment of the students who aren't, who weren't being addressed in that manner. And I think, I definitely hear your point about the investment in 13 students and I think the reason why I don't even blink at it is because it's year one. We're in year five and the community hasn't bought into it and it has not been able to grow, then I think there needs to be a little bit of a, is this really what we can afford? Is this really what we're interested in maintaining and is there another way to serve this population? But it was embarking on this effort of, of trying to do this and when we get to Mr. Peterson's point and yours regarding the success of the program, right now, of course, the success is being measured purely anecdotally. So it's, yes, they're having a great time, but I also think if we go to a classroom of 24, 25 kids, a lot of them are going to give similar. I love, you know, school, I mean, we've got, we've got great teachers, great staff and they have great experiences. So ultimately, when we start getting test results back, you know, we won't know, is it because, you know, will the scores go down when the program grows? And then, you know, we especially can have a meaningful discussion on that. But to the point of the private school setting of 13 students, I think in year one, in some ways, it could have, that's actually probably a great, I mean, that's an unofficial pilot then, quite frankly. And that we are, for overall, a fairly minimal cost, going to try this out and see if it can't grow next year and have a more robust 17, 20, 23, 25 students in a class, I think this was a worthwhile effort to have. But again, back to your point, five years from now, it's only coming in at 13 students, then I think we would have, you know, any board would have to revisit that, that the community hasn't bought into it. And that is now a, a much greater, you know, investment of money that isn't necessary, we're not meeting the needs of everyone, we need to come up with something different. But at this point, I think it's worthwhile.
Mrs. Leeper.
I know this has sort of become like my, my thing and I've always tried to approach this, like, I'm not defensive of the program. We've heard for years that we had a gap in our offerings for our highest achieving math students. And so we proposed as an opportunity to see if there was interest among families. And we had an opportunity, we had the space, we didn't need to hire an FTE, so that we kind of had a unique opportunity where it was almost no cost to the district to provide this type of opportunity for families and children who were not feeling like their math needs were met with our general curriculum. And if families wanted that offering for their children, it was here. And we'll find out. And I think it was great to have like a mid-year check-in about how people are experiencing the program so far and we'll get more data and evidence at the end of the year and see also what it will look like for next year, whether there's another batch of families and hopefully more than 13 that are really interested in pursuing this or not. But we will see. But we will see. And I think we as a board, but I'll speak for myself, have been trying to discuss that it's okay to take some, some risks and try some new things, and if it's not a success, that's okay too. But we gave it a shot. And I hear you on the gender equity, it's always a concern for me, I think we talked about that a lot as a board table and something we'll absolutely keep an eye on. And I think that it's not only math or other areas within our curriculum, that that's something we need to be mindful of. Um, so I, I hear you and I think we'll continue to keep an eye on that.
Mrs. Vitale, you had a comment?
Um, yeah, I was someone who actually spoke against math academy last year, um, during public comment, when I wasn't on the board. Um, but really, I think about this in a couple of different ways. One, um, anyone who doesn't know me, I have a large presence in the SPED community. Um, Fairfield is somewhat of a leader in the inclusion model. And when I think about this, you know, it's not inclusion, we're used to inclusion in the least restrictive environment, that doesn't just apply to one segment of the population. It's not just for SPED kids. So going off and creating this sort of elite math academy and separating them from everybody else is not exactly what I call equality or fair. And so, and you know, at, another point on this program is, who are we catering to? We're catering to families who can afford to drive their kid to school. So not all of the children who were picked to go to this program could even participate because they don't have the luxury of being able to drive their child to the school because we're not providing transportation. So there's no equality there, and there's no equity. Um, so I had a problem with that. And when I think of an all-day secluded program, I think about children who might need an intervention to actually access their curriculum, you know? Uh, an all-day secluded program that allows, um, children who need specific instruction to embed it into every single subject to access the curriculum, like, like, to me, this program should be for children with reading disabilities, or something where their intervention needs to be embedded into every subject to, you know, participate in the class, not exceed in something. Although I really do appreciate the feedback we got from the parents and I love that the kids were so successful in it. I do personally think that it probably had a lot to do with the class size. I think it's going to be pretty hard to believe that you could put 25 kids in that class and have the same outcome. Um, so, you know, personally, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of the concept of this, um, and I'll be looking at that going forward.
Mrs. Leeper.
I just want to say that I think it's a little bit of a mischaracterization to say these kids are like self-contained the entire day, because we heard that they're, have lunch in recess and other opportunities to mix within the grade. And that also, I think we should be really careful when we're talking about inclusion, to act as if none of these students can also be receiving special ed services, because that's not necessarily the case. And I really have tried very carefully to ensure that we do not discuss this program as some sort of spectrum, that this is one type of kids and special ed is a different type of kids, because my professional background is in special ed, I'm very mindful of inclusion, and that this program is just offering specialized instruction for a group of children whose needs we were not previously meeting. And we make really significant efforts to meet the needs of all of our unique learners in this district, and this was one subset of students whose needs we were not making a specific effort to meet.
Mr. Peterson.
I, I was the one who, who brought up small class size, I'm sure many other people were thinking about it at the same time. But, um, I want to piggyback on a lot of the things that have been said around the table. I, I, I'm both, I spoke against it when it came up last year, um, for a variety of reasons, some of which you, you touched on. But I also want to say that as a, as a board member, I, I do take my responsibility very seriously that this board chose to do this. And, and, and now that it's in there, what I am looking for is, how can we make it better? Is this a, is it working? What are the outcomes? Um, how is it going to, uh, is it going to cost anymore? I'm, I'm certainly not trying to undermine it at all, but I, I do think that it, it is at a point, the mid-year review is, is great, and I, I kind of want more of that information. Um, and we'll see how that is going forward. You know, speak to the, to the advantages of the program, I, you know, it's great that it seems to be serving the population that it's serving. And I do think that when it was brought up, there was an issue of, uh, you know, how, how do we segment various subjects? Uh, I remember at the time, I thought, well, maybe there's a way that we can do that for our reading students as well. Um, there may be lessons that we learn from this program that can be applied elsewhere in the curriculum. So I think that there's a lot that we can learn from it, a lot that we can see going forward about it. Um, but it's something we need to stay on top of, and it's something that we need to see if we can, you know, how can we improve it? How can we adapt it? How can we, how can we learn? So I, I think that as board members, we all take that responsibility very seriously. I'll also say, uh, to your gender equity question, not specifically with the, the math department, we, we have heard, you know, a variety of curricular areas come, come before us, teachers, um, curriculum directors. It, it's something that they mention frequently when they talk about their topics. So I know that it's, it's a, it's definitely on the minds of our teachers and administrators. And we didn't ask that specific question last night, but I, I have heard it on multiple occasions from multiple subject areas.
Do any other members of the board wish to come? Mrs. Jacobson.
Hi, thank you for coming out and sharing your concerns, and I hear all of my colleagues' perspectives on this matter. And my perspective at this point is that I get a little weary when we start talking about the number of students a certain anything may serve in regards to its merit. There are certainly plenty of programs throughout this and services throughout this district that service a small number of students and who, and some that students can't even access. So I'll give an example. My own kids would never be able to access symphonic orchestra, ever. Does that mean I don't think that those kids who can shouldn't have that opportunity? Absolutely not. So I get a little, when we start talking about, well, there's only a few that this helps, we need to be careful with that kind of thinking. Um, when this first came up, I had concerns about it, not because of the services or that meeting the needs of our students, was that we were embarking on a facilities plan and talking about redistricting, and I wasn't sure of taking up two classrooms before we had that discussion and where things should go. That was more my concern. But now that I'm hearing about the feedback that I'm getting from parents and their kids and the experiences, I'm with, more with Jen Max and Canelli at this point, let's see how it goes, let's see if it grows in the future, um, and, and always come back to it at that time. But I just wanted to share that piece about being careful about the number of kids that something might serve, because that could be applied to a lot of different things.
I, I agree with you, but I, I do think there needs to be constant review of that and a reasonable, meaningful threshold, especially when we are fighting for every dollar that we need. So I don't think it's something that can be ignored completely.
Thank you. Mrs. Gerber.
Well, just to kind of follow up on what Mrs. Jacobson was just saying, um, we have Mandarin Chinese at the high school, and I think there are probably about 13 kids taking that. And there have been discussions ongoing, now they've had it for a few years, and it is something that we review, that we discuss, you know, at some point, do we want to maybe revisit it? That said, the students who are taking that class, I'm sure it is very important to them. So it's, it's really hard, I mean, it's, on the one hand, you can certainly see, and we're always talking about class sizes, small class sizes are so important, and we have this, you know, 13, you know, students, but those are 13 students who are getting, from what I can tell, and excellent experience, and perhaps those 13 will then spur others to move forward, so maybe next year it'll be 20. Um, and so are we going to just say, I mean, 13 was the cutoff, if it had been less than 13, it wouldn't have happened? Um, and, uh, so I just, it, it does make me hesitant to say it's not worth it if we have 13, especially in the first year, because it is the first year, as Mrs. Max and Canelli said, and I think that was a big leap for those 13 families to take. And now that they have had this positive experience, there may be five, six, seven families who say, mm, I wish I'd done that, and try to figure out a way that they could possibly join them next year. And then there could be a bunch of current third graders who are going to say, all right, well, they had a really fantastic experience, so we may have to turn people away even, in that case, or not. Um, so I just think it's something that we do need to look at and, um, you know, keep an eye on, which is, I think, which we've all been saying.
Mr. Peterson.
Just full disclosure, my son is taking Mandarin this year.
Uh, we're at the, actually, we're a little bit past the hour mark. Um, does anyone else from the audience have, wish to come up?
Jill Vergara, uh, I didn't expect to say anything tonight, I just thought I'd come and observe and see what everybody discussed. Um, and then the facilities discussion made me want to talk about air conditioning, because I think that that's the natural next thing that you need to talk about, because I, I think facilities and maintenance is one thing, and I definitely agree that we need to be spending more and funding more for maintenance. Um, and I'm glad that that was a big discussion last year, and we talked about it at the RTM level too, and I think that everybody really supports putting more into maintenance. But air conditioning, you, you can spend money on maintenance, and then if you don't have air conditioning, it's all for nothing. Um, and I feel like one of the biggest health, um, situations and, and issues for our kids that our kids are facing today, it stems from a lack of air conditioning, especially when we're having increased security measures, which closes everything up, we're having higher temperatures, um, and it's wetter, and we're necessarily going to have more mold issues. And I think that an immediate concern is air conditioning, and it's very concerning to me that we are not pursuing that this year with that, um, the money that I thought was going to go into a review or an analysis of, um, what, um, what we were going to be doing and how we were going to approach air conditioning. I might be wrong about that, but I thought that was taken off the table for this year, and that's really unfortunate. I hope we're going to move faster on that.
Mrs. Gerber.
Uh, that line was cut, but not done away with. Um, so we are still in the process, that is something that is going to happen this year, is getting some of the estimates regarding what the costs are going to be. Um, I'm still not 100% clear on exactly how extensive that report's going to be. I think it's basically get the most you can get with the money that you have, and then we'll move forward on that. Um, but, you know, my first year on the board, when the Ludlow Building Committee was, or the Ludlow Building Project, there wasn't even a building committee yet, when they were bringing that to the board for approval with the ed specs, I asked the superintendent at that time, um, what, to find out what the cost for air conditioning for Ludlow would be. And at that point in 2012, I believe it was, it was over $8 million.
And now it's like three times more.
Right, and don't forget, that's for one high school, and we need to have equity in our high schools. So obviously, we would need to put that in for Ward as well. Then we're also talking about Woods, um, I think, a little bit at Tomlinson, and then we're talking about Osborne Hill, Jennings, Dwight, North Stratfield. I think that's everybody, because with the Mill Hill Building Committee. So it's going to be, I said North Stratfield, yeah? Yeah, I did, okay. Oh, and Walter Fitzgerald. Um, but, so, I, I think everyone at this table would love to have air conditioning yesterday. Um, and I think that we have heard some of, members of some of the other town bodies voice their support, um, but it's one thing, as with maintenance, to say that they support it, it's another thing when we come to them with a number, a very scary number, I have no doubt. So I think that's something that, and I'm sure you will be happy to advocate for that, um, both in your capacity as a parent and as an RTM member, but there is going to have to be a serious community discussion, and if this is something we want to do, there has to be support, a large amount of support to move this forward, because whatever that number is, it's going to be very big and very scary. And I am happy to fight for that, even though I have no skin in the game, because my daughter's graduating from the un-air-conditioned Ludlow High School, so, but I know how horrific it has been in that school. I mean, I think in the entire 17 years I've been a parent, I've had three years when my child was in a fully air-conditioned school, and that's it. So I know how bad it can be, we all know how bad it can be. We've been at those open houses where it's just so intolerable. I would love to just give tours to RTM, Board of Selectmen, and Board of Finance members at Open House, at Ludlow and Ward High School, because truly, those are some of the most painful, and Woods, I will say too. Um, it's 90 degrees in classrooms at 7 o'clock at night. So if that's what we need to do to get buy-in, I am happy to lead tours. And, um, you know, I just think we just need to keep reminding people, but we have not taken it off the table in terms of that study, it may not be as extensive as we'd like, but we are committed to moving forward as much as we can. But we can only go so far, at the end of the day, we need people to be able to write the checks on that, and they're going to be big checks.
Mrs. Jacobson.
Um, hi, thanks for coming out. Um, I, is this on? Yeah, okay, sorry. Um, I think you know that most of this board, if not all of us, do agree, not only for health reasons and safety reasons and every other reasons that we need to move forward this in a, in as swift a manner as possible. I'm actually hopeful that, given throughout the state, the conditions of some schools and districts, so that there might be actually some sort of legislative process on this. Um, it's hard to believe that in our several hundreds of years of history, Connecticut doesn't really have temperature regulations for our schools. Um, daycare has a minimum of 68, but there is no maximum. It's, it's just, it's kind of surprising, because they're not shy about passing laws. So, um, I think that this could be something that, there should be some sort of standard at this point, given that we're sending children into ovens at certain points. So, um, I think that for the entire state, at least I would hope that some sort of regulations or standards would come from a legislative body, to be honest with you on this. And that would actually help us along to move forward with that as quickly as we possibly can.
Mrs. Vitale.
And just to piggyback on what Mrs. Gerber said, there is going to be an RFP going out, asking for companies to submit a proposal for what it would take to go in to evaluate all of our schools, to see what the need would be to bring air conditioning, you know, just the, the electrical, the main, the mechanical. It may, originally, we had wanted it to be every building, there was a reduction to that line item, so it may not be every school, but we're going to at least get the pricing to know what it would cost district-wide. So that work is, is being done, it was somewhat delayed, just town purchasing, as you know, has been somewhat caught up in, um, RFPs for other issues.
Mr. Asa.
So, yes, with air conditioning, but also one thing that we need to keep repeating is mechanical means of fresh air. So it's not just air conditioning, we need to get fresh air into the buildings, because that's going to help with the health and safety of the children. The air conditioning can help keep the air humidity levels and everything, but we also need to be advocating for fresh air and air conditioning. And at our meeting two nights ago, um, it was discussed that, um, it was anticipated that it could cost 10 to 20 grand, $10,000 to $20,000, um, just to determine what would be needed to get the full estimate and work out and engineering for Walter Fitzgerald. So, again, as others have said, um, we're going to get the best bang for our buck, um, with this RFP, and to try and find out, um, what it'll cost. But I think we, we are hoping to move in that direction.
Any other comment? Thank you.
Could I make one more comment?
You may make one more comment.
Thank you. I also wanted to, um, say something about the math academy. I know I spoke, um, last night, or the night before, it's all confused, long week. Um, and, uh, I wanted to address the comments about the class size. It is wonderful to be in a small class, but I have to say, what my son talks about mostly is his peers, and the fact that they have similar interests, he can talk about Rubik's cubes and algorithms and play with the puzzles in class. Um, and it's just been a sharing experience with peers, that's what I hear about a lot, his friends in class, all excited about very similar things with, related to math. And, um, to me, that's been the biggest part of his experience.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, I will turn this. Very quickly, very quickly.
So, um, quickly, air conditioning, middle school schedule, 88 minutes, I cannot, I have an un-air-conditioned classroom, I cannot imagine my door closed for 88 minutes, just cannot imagine it. I mean, 45, you come for open house, it's 15 minutes, gets warmer and warmer, and security reasons, you got to keep the door closed. Just unimaginable. Just unimaginable, that's all I can tell you. Question about music, you talked about music before for middle school. You know, we don't go to, you've had these parent conferences, you might, you probably know more than we do, was, is the, is the thought that lessons would be part of the enrichment period? No. So lessons would still be pullouts of classroom? Okay. At this point, at this, just one editorial, anecdotally, my kids, when they come in, "Mr. Sayagin have a lesson today?" They really don't want to go. I'd say, "Go." You know, you'll, you'll forget about this lesson on slavery, but your music experience, to me, is more important. That'll serve you better and longer in life than the lesson that you'll miss today. However, they know they can't make up what they missed in the class, because it's not just a matter of giving them material. So it's a big trade-off, just to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll try this again. Any last comments? Seeing none, I will turn this back over to you, Mrs. Vitale.
Thank you. Can I have, well, you know what, Mrs. Gottlieb, thank you very much for, for coming tonight and for moderating, you did a beautiful job, we might be inviting you back in the future. And thank you for, everyone for coming out tonight. Happy holidays, happy new year, appreciate your, the discussion, and you taking the time. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Asa, all in favor? It is unanimous, we are adjourned.